The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, when I call this meeting order, the Town of Berlin Town Council meeting for Tuesday, January 5th. Start with the Pledge of Believers.
Pledge of Believers. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the dismal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kate, roll call.
Councilor Campanella here. Councilor Evans.
Here.
Mayor Krasinski.
Here.
Councilor Letty.
Here.
Councilor Peonesa.
Here.
Councilor Rochette.
Here.
Councilor Russell.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, now we have the, we have a special proclamation tonight. I'm gonna get up there and read it, and we'll present this. Okay, we have an Eagle Scout in our presence tonight, which is great to have you here. Jeffrey Damato, come on up. Let me just read a couple things. You know, the project, I remember reading about it in the paper, and I'm just gonna read a couple things about it. Your project was completed in October 2014, which consisted of building a wooden bridge over the Cross Creek Drive cul-de-sac heading into Bicentennial Park. The beavers were active in the area and were damming up a culvert, making it impossible to enter the park from this location without wading through the water. And I can tell you that I've used your bridge a couple times walking through that area, so it's nice that it's there. It was never fun trying to figure out how to get across that. And you got funding from the local businesses, along with some neighbors, and obviously the bridge mainframe was initially built to specifications in your driveway and trailer to the site where it was fully assembled. Many Boy Scouts and their leaders, some were skilled carpenters, assisted in building with the rails and the decking of the arch bridge. The new bridge allows visitors to walk and hike into Bicentennial Park with ease, not to mention local residents like myself that were grateful to have a new access to the park near their home, so I appreciate that project. So tonight, we have a town proclamation for you. Be it hereby known to all that the Town of Berlin recognizes Jeffrey Stephen Damato on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, Boy Scouts of America. In recognition of his commitment to his family, community, and the principles of Eagle scouting, the Town Council congratulates Jeffrey and extends best wishes to him and your future endeavors. And this was dated in August 2015. Took a while. The wheels of government slow, turned very slowly, so we're sorry it took this long to give you the proclamation.
Sorry.
Actually, Rachel signed it as the mayor at that point in time, so she's here to present it, along with myself. So congratulations very much.
So I would like to say congratulations also, and it's been an honor to recognize so many Eagle Scouts, and you're one of many, and I know that you have done your parents in your town proud, so congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot. All right. Is there anything? I don't know if you wanted to say anything. I forgot to ask you. Jeffrey, I don't know if you wanted to say anything. You have any words of wisdom for us all?
Uh, no. Just... Yes.
Probably a smart thing. Very good. All right. Thanks a lot. Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. Great, a great thing you did there. Okay, so now we have our audience of citizens. Is there anybody that wants to speak about anything? Whatever you would like, whatever. Anything's on the agenda tonight. Anything that's not on the agenda, this is your time to speak to the Town Council. Very rare that you have that opportunity, right? Twice a month, so. I see they're lining up. We'll take numbers. Okay, so there's no one here to talk to us tonight, and that's okay. We encourage all the citizens at whatever time to come forward, so we'll move on to our meeting agenda. First, we're gonna take our consent agenda. We have two topics on that. I guess we can prob, well, we'll take them separately. The first topic is, if I could have a motion on the purchasing of auto parts.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of auto parts using the above State of Connecticut Department of Administration Services contract from Connecticut Tire, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Excuse me. Mark, you can just ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Well, so let's ask for that motion then.
Okay. I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written here in front of us.
Second on that?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to the, our first public hearing. All right, so we're gonna, we, it's just the first meeting. Okay. Kate, you're gonna read the legal notice.
What you're gonna do on this one is right behind, I don't have to read the legal notice on the bond, I'll read it on the next one.
Okay.
All right? That's why it's always so difficult, especially when they're together.
Yes.
But you're gonna go into the first-person version of the public hearing.
Yes.
And just read it as Attorney Fossey has written.
Got, got it.
Yep.
Public hearing, Town Council. The Town of Berlin held on January 5th, 2016. I hereby convene the public hearing for the $1,300,000 Hubbard School Roof Appropriation and Bond Ordinance. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the Town Clerk. And we just, now we just need a motion.
You're gonna continue reading.
Okay. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the following proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting? So a motion by someone?
Okay, I make a motion to propose what the mayor just asked for.
We have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion passes. And an ordinance appropriating $1,300,000 for the replacement of the Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School roof and authorizing the issue of $1,300,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. At this point, do we have any comments from the public? Okay, hearing no comments. I will, I call the public hearing on the $1,300,000 Hubbard School Bond Roof Ordinance closed. So that one's closed. We have another one. Okay, and this one, will be the legal notice? Yes, thank you.
The Town Council of the Town of Berlin will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 5th, 2016, at 7:00 PM at the Berlin Town Hall, Council Chambers, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut for the following purpose. Be it ordained by the Town Council that we hereby move a warning of a lease agreement of not more than five years with Bank of America, Public Capital Corp., for the Streetlight Acquisition and LED Conversion Program for an amount not to exceed $1,600,000. The resolution will authorize combining the aforementioned project and related financing with the Naresco Lease approved on December 1st, 2015, into one financing with a blended interest rate and ratified Naresco Lease dated at Berlin, Connecticut, this 20th day of December, 2015.
All right, thank you, Kate. At this time, since this is a public hearing, if there's any comments from the public about this particular hearing, you may step forward at this time. Okay, seeing none. Do we have any Town Council comments on this one? Anything? No? Okay, so at this point, I will close the public hearing at 7:10 PM. Okay, good. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to new business. The first topic is the ordinance that we just had the public hearing on, the replacement of the roof at Hubbard Elementary School. Now, I guess on this one, if we want to vote on it, we would waive Rule 7, which would allow us to vote tonight instead of at the next meeting. I don't know if we have any, I guess we need a, we need a motion on that, so a motion to, for discussion at a minimum, to waive Rule 7.
Okay, I'll make a motion to waive Rule 7 of the council rules and procedures and adopt an ordinance appropriating $1,300,000 for the replacement of the Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School roof and authorizing the issue of $1,300,000 bonds to the town to meet the said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose. Pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose.
Just for the, just for the Rule 7, right? Yeah. So that was Rule 7. Second on the Rule 7?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on this? Do we, and then we wanna?
Yeah, I just would want to make a comment here. You know, we have, with an ordinance where we are appropriating funds, we are going out for a longer-term debt, and we're gonna take that on. That will impact how much debt load we have over the future for us, and so any citizens that have concern about that and the impact on their taxes and in the future for that particular school, it would be something that we will help for folks to come forward with that. Many times, they're not aware of that. As, as things are, come forward, there's some discussion about it, but then it, folks come to us afterwards or even read it in the paper and then say, "Yeah, we didn't know we were considering that." So waiving of the Rule 7 tends to short-circuit that so that folks don't have that opportunity. So I, at this point, I'm not gonna be comfortable in waiving Rule 7, and I will not be voting in favor of that. I would certainly want folks to come and express any concerns and that we could consider it at our next meeting. I think that would be appropriate and would be the timing that we should consider for this particular item.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Any other comments? Anybody feelings for or against? You know, I think that's fine. I mean, I don't think there's necessarily any rush with this one. I don't think they're probably going out there and finishing the roof tonight or tomorrow with the weather. So if we may till, wait till the second meeting, I think sometimes, you know, perhaps to wait a couple weeks wouldn't matter. If there's any other comments from anyone, then we can go for the next meeting. So if we can take a vote on waiving the Rule 7, we have that on the table. So all those in favor of waiving the rule? And all those in favor of not waiving Rule 7? Aye.
Aye.
You favor of?
I'm in favor. I.
You want, you want to waive?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, all of them, okay, so we've got three and those opposed.
Nay.
Nay. All right, so the motion carries. We're gonna just table that just till the next meeting. And, you know, I, from my own experience too, I know this is probably not the hot topic of the community, replacing the Hubbard roof, but nonetheless, a lot of times in my past experience in planning and zoning, we did wait a couple weeks till the next meeting if anybody wanted to talk about it or anything, so I don't think it's that a good deal to wait a couple weeks, so. All right, so, next meeting is, the next topic is the lease agreement, so we need a motion. And this one, I guess there is some nuances in the, in the rules, in the charter, in the rules of the Town Council, which is probably one of the things we could hopefully correct going forward, but apparently with the lease agreement, we don't, we don't need to waive the Rule 7. It's a little bit different, so if we can have a motion on topic two?
Sure. I will make a motion to enter into a lease agreement of not more than five years with the Bank of America, Public Capital Corp., to fund the Streetlight Acquisition and LED Conversion Program with Tanca Lighting for an amount not to exceed $1,600,000. Authorizing combining the aforementioned project and related financing with the Naresco Lease approved on December 1st, 2015, into one financing with a blended interest rate.
Thanks. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this? I know we've all had gotten a lot of information on this. This ties into obviously the other agreement with Naresco. So, all those in favor?
Mayor, let me, sorry, I just interject. And this is looking at the funding of this particular project. I think it's a positive thing for the town. It'll be able to help us as we look forward to this coming budget. We see that there are some things that are some capital type of items that we would otherwise had to find a way to pay for. Whether we were gonna be able to do it in this next budget or not, would be a stretch or a challenge, I think, at best, but so I think that this has some benefit to it. You know, having said that, and I'm just giving that insight to folks, I also work for Eversource, which also has some jurisdiction over it, and at this point, I'm gonna, I'll be abstaining from this, but that there's still, I think, merit outside of any endorsement or any direction that Eversource would have.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Okay, so any other comments? Any questions? All right, so all those in favor of this lease agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And I know we have one abstention, so the motion carries. Thank you very much. I think that'll be a nice energy-saving program for the town and some nice new streetlights too. Okay, what we're gonna do now, we're just gonna move a couple topics around here if we could. I just wanna, if I can enter, before we have an executive session coming, before a topic we need to vote on, so before we get into that, if I could move, have a motion to move number five, the Berlin High School renovation, up to number three slot, so to be the next topic?
Okay. I would like to make a motion to move topics number five and number seven ahead of the executive session.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Any questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll go ahead into the Berlin High School report.
My report won't be very long unless there's some questions, but Mayor, I know you got to tour the school.
Yes.
A couple weeks before the holidays, and hopefully you got a good flavor for what's going on over there.
Yeah.
About two-thirds of the school has been renovated and turned over as of the end of the summer, and actually, we just turned over yesterday the B gym and the girls locker room and team rooms, and they're very happy to be using that. Looks fantastic. The other sections of work, which essentially include the classrooms on the east and west side of the senior courtyard, and then the auditorium and all the music wing to the north. Those classrooms around the senior courtyard will be completed and ready for turnover by or before April break, as will the social studies rooms and the other spaces downstairs and the light well. We're hoping to open all that. We have to work out some safety egress and so on logistics with the building officials, but we think we've got a plan for that that'll work out. And then the last areas to be turned over will be the music rooms at the end of the summer and the auditorium by October 1st. So that's essentially where we are. In terms of budget right now, we are still tracking under budget. Between the owner and the CM, we have over a million and a half dollars in contingency yet. We still have about $800,000 in uncommitted allowances, and we think we've hit most of our changes or have most of them accounted for already in that budget, so we're feeling pretty good about things right now.
Great, yes.
I just, my daughter's a freshman, and she came, I picked her up from school, and she said the B gym and the locker rooms were open, so she was very thankful for that. And I just, you know, continue to want to say thank you to your team, the contractors, the folks who are doing the work, Doug, and the folks, town employees, that we are on time and under budget. And I think, you know, there's been a lot of talk in the town that we weren't going to be able to do that, and I think it's been managed very well, and we're so close to being there, you know, a couple more months and we'll be done.
Well, I thank you for that, but as you said, it is a team effort, and that even includes working with the administration, with Fran, the assistant principals, and the teachers and so on, that everybody's gotta give and take a little with noise and things that are going on and inconvenience, but it's been a real team effort to get it done. And I think we had spoken about possibly if there's members that want to tour at some time.
Yes, yeah, we did. If anybody's interested, yeah, we'll, you know, set it up.
We'll set something up, yeah.
Whatever you guys want to do. Walked through it, I walked through it a few weeks ago.
I just have a fast question.
Sure.
October, you said October 1?
The auditorium has always been scheduled to run basically to the end of September, and it'll be getting in the last of the seats, the sound system and things of that nature, but we are planning on having the program that surrounds it, the music and so on, would be turned over for the start of the school year, so it shouldn't impact anybody other than starting performances after October 1.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Dave?
Yeah, just had a question if there's been a tracking of things that may have been presented to the state for reimbursement or percentage reimbursement that has been, has come back to us as disallowed?
There is. That's tracked. There's a spreadsheet that has all that in. There's actually been 22 state change orders submitted. I couldn't tell you the total dollars of all 22. I can tell you that they have reviewed and responded to 17 of them as of last May. They haven't responded to any of them since last May. And at that point in time, we had about $900,000 of ineligible's, and I'm gonna say, I probably shouldn't say because I don't know exactly, but I'm gonna say probably something on the order of about $1.6 or $1.8 million of eligible's out of those. So it was about two-thirds eligible and one-third ineligible on those that were submitted. As far as tracking against our town share, right now, we're tracking well below the town share that was approved in the referendum in 2010.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Comments? Questions? Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. And some of us will, I'm sure, see you for a tour.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Okay, number seven, moved up to number, I guess, four, our fraud assessment. Jim, I know you've got a report for us. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Good evening, everybody. As this has been discussed with the Audit Committee, both the former Audit Committee prior to the election and the current Audit Committee recently, an executive session due to the nature of the assessment. Now that I have discussed this with the Audit Committee and have some direction, the purpose of me being here tonight is to provide the information to the public on what was discovered during the fraud risk assessment. This assessment was, is formally called Fraud Cost and Resilience Review, and the purpose of it is to determine how effectively the town is protected against fraud. It's very important to note that this is not being conducted because a fraud was identified. This is being conducted as a proactive measure, as recommended by our financial auditors after the 2014 audit. It was not only recommended in Berlin, but in many other towns across the state in response to the number of financial frauds that have occurred in municipalities in the state of Connecticut. So the town chose to follow that recommendation, and we went out to bid to have this done and awarded the bid to Sobel and Company. They performed a detailed review, interviewing approximately 25 Town and Board of Education employees. Each person went through a series of approximately 30 questions, standard list of questions developed by the firm, to determine knowledge of any fraud, knowledge of what to do if you noticed a fraud, and things of that nature. As a result of their review, they came up with a number of recommendations, and I'm not gonna read what I already wrote here, but the majority of recommendations were administrative in nature, such as that we needed a formal ethics policy in the town. We do have a section of our charter about the code of ethics, which they thought was excellent, but that is not communicated to most employees. We're unaware that it even existed, and the Board of Ethics actually hadn't formally met since 2006. So even though it was in the charter, it was, for all intents and purposes, ineffective. So a lot of the recommendations surrounded developing policies and procedures, forming a committee to review policies and procedures overall in the town, developing a clear way to communicate those policies and procedures to all Town employees as well as our taxpayers. All of that is already underway. I've drafted a new ethics policy that is with the Audit Committee right now for review, so that is already in process, and the Town administrators are working on the other recommendations. In addition to the administrative recommendations, there were several specific areas that although no current fraud was detected, they recommended that more detailed review, known as a forensic audit, be conducted in these areas to make sure that there is no potential for fraud and that the internal controls are appropriate to prevent a fraud. And those specific areas are the Timberland Golf Course, a large cash operation, a lot of cash kept on hand down there, so they wanted to do a detailed review of, or they recommended that the town do a detailed review of all the books and records, the policies and the internal controls at the golf course, specifically at the Pro Shop. The second area was the Berlin Visiting Nurse Association. Primary concern there was because of HIPAA regulations. They wanted to make sure that we have the appropriate controls in place over the billing system, so they made a recommendation for a detailed review of the billing system, compliance with federal rules, especially with HIPAA. A lot of, a lot of that is already performed because the nursing, nurses are required to get accreditation every year, but they recommended a more detailed review. The third area was the Board of Education, and Eva Gallup, the Director of Operations for the Board of Ed, is here. I'll just say in general that the concern there was with the Board of Education budget process, specifically surrounding funds allocated for technology and how they were being used. Eva, I don't know if you want to say anymore?
I don't know. If you have first questions or anything, I would speak to that, but other than that, I'm basically a new person in town, so hopefully we can drive the budget process in terms of identifying and identifying so that people know what we're doing.
Can we, can we get her on the mic, please? I think that's what we need to do. Sorry.
I wasn't gonna say, I wasn't gonna speak much to it because it's clear as to what is stated, but being the, I'm the new person in town, hopefully the new budget process will be clearer in terms of what we're doing and how we're doing it, in terms of identifying what we're purchasing, when we're purchasing it, and what we're purchasing it for.
Thank you. Another area, kind of separate, was they had a concern about the information technology infrastructure of the town, specifically preventing any kind of phishing attack or anything of that nature on the town, and the concern was heightened because we're kind of an unusual town in that we have a visiting nurse association that's part of the town, which raises HIPAA concerns. So if there's any kind of openness of our system to viruses or any kind of infiltration, that exposes us to possible federal violations of HIPAA. So they also recommended a detailed technology audit and security assessment for both the Town and the Board of Education. I have discussed all of these recommendations with the Audit Committee. We're meeting again on January 21st, at which time I anticipate a decision will be made as to which of these items, if any, or possibly all, will be focused on. We do intend to go out to bid for any of the forensic audits that the Audit Committee decides to conduct, so we will not just be using the same company we already use, nor will we be using our existing financial auditors for this, this process. Once that goes out to bid, obviously that will be put into the budget. There are estimated costs for each one of these. They are all relative levels of complexity, the most expensive being the IT assessment, which would cost about $60,000. The rest would be anywhere between $10,000 and $25,000 each, but that's just an estimate. We'd have to go out to bid to get some more specific costs, so I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Questions? Comments?
Sure. Mr. Renn, the auditors had given us kind of a general flavor, and I think it'd be helpful for citizens to understand, and I do appreciate your indication that this is a proactive approach, 'cause it's, it's not that, we found a lot of problems right off and we started doing that because of this, but it was a recommendation. We followed through with that, and it would be understanding that in a town of our size, I think the auditors gave us some rough figure, and I don't know if you even remember what that percentage might be, that in a particular town, we might find an amount associated with that, and it wasn't necessarily an amount, it was a percentage, I think he gave.
we be using our existing financial auditors for this, this process. Once that goes out to bid, obviously that will be put into the budget. There are estimated costs for each one of these. They are all relative levels of complexity, the most expensive being the IT assessment, which would cost about $60,000. The rest would be anywhere between $10,000 and $25,000 each, but that's just an estimate. We'd have to go out to bid to get some more specific costs. So I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Questions? Comments?
Sure. Mr. Renn, the auditors had given us kind of a general flavor, and I think it'd be helpful for citizens to understand, and I do appreciate your indication that this is a proactive approach, because it's, it's not that we, we found a lot of problems right off and we, we started doing that because of this, but it was a recommendation. We followed through with that, and it would be understanding that in a si, a town of our size, I think the auditors gave us some rough figure, and I don't know if you even remember what that percentage might be, that in, in a particular town, we might find an amount associated with that, and it wasn't necessarily an amount, it was a percentage, I think he gave. But, and, and also the other part of it is maybe helping understand, citizens understand that fraud is not only just, say, cash or funds, but it has, can potentially have to do with the use of time as, as well as materials or equipment.
Sure.
If you give a little perspective from, from your end on that.
Sure. I actually don't have this, the specific percentage with me. That was based on a generalization of fraud reviews that have occurred throughout the country, where they came up with, you know, a percentage, and I actually think they did come up with a dollar amount of fraud that could potentially be found. I don't have that with me, but really, that's just a generalization. That doesn't say what was found or what is suspected to be found in Berlin. But Councilor Evans is correct. This was not only, a lot of people think of these things and think it's just finance, it's just cash, and often those are the ones we see in the newspaper. It was actually a study for fraud, waste, and abuse, which could be anything from improper reporting of time, time away. It does not necessarily have to be the theft of cash or the theft of an item. So the 29 questions that people were asked were not specific to just financial issues. They were to, to determine whether not only there was any theft going on, but whether there was any waste of resources or other types of abuse going on. So it was more comprehensive than just a financial audit. I also want to point out that we do have, as required by state statute, a financial audit that occurs every year, at which they look at internal controls surrounding financial statements, but they don't do any detailed review of any other procedures or internal controls. They look very high level at control walkthrough, so this was not duplicative of that effort. This was on top of that effort. I also want to point out that we're one of the few towns that actually went out to bid on this process, rather than simply using our financial auditors who made the recommendation to also conduct the process. We're, I think, the only town that I'm aware of right now that actually went out to bid and used a totally independent company, independent of the town and independent of the auditors.
Okay, great, yeah.
I just wanted to say that, that was an excellent idea to do that, to get a different set of eyes on it, you know, and I think the most important thing is to have a comprehensive, like you said, ethics policy, so even new hires and existing hires are on the same page, and they read it, they understand it, and they sign off on it, so there can be no question if something goes wrong that they didn't know.
I did, I did in drafting the ethics policy, get a best practice policy from CCM, which is kind of the lobbying agency for municipalities in Connecticut, and they have access to information from different municipalities, so they gave me a best practice document. What I did is compared it against Chapter 9 of the town charter and kind of incorporated the provisions already in the charter into the policy. We're also going to do an executive summary of that, so that somebody going to the website doesn't have to read 20 pages of an ethics policy. We'll do an executive summary on the website, so you can see a bullet point review of, of the basics.
Okay. You know, one thing, obviously, I think it's great that we did this review. Obviously, a Code of Ethics is extremely important. You know, you can't teach integrity and character, but you can certainly remind people, I'm sure, I, I know all our town employees have good character and, and have integrity, but it's, doesn't hurt to remind them, you know, of those issues. And I don't know if it's something you would consider, but one of the things we did in my past career with the Justice Department, although not everything was perfect in the Justice Department, but many things were, and we, every year, when we did our performance appraisals, we had a, a standards of conduct that, you know, kind of went down, basically all the do's and don'ts of our position and, and general integrity and character issues. So I don't know if that'd be something you'd consider incorporating into the Code of Ethics.
At this point, any recommendations are appreciated.
So we could talk about that?
Absolutely.
But I think that's, it's always a good thing to remind everybody, and, you know, in today's world, and we've certainly seen all the headlines in different towns in Connecticut, around the country, state level, federal level, so I think it's a great program we've embarked upon here. Go ahead, Bernard.
Jim, this would also be something that would, we would require of outside vendors to be aware of also, right?
Absolutely correct, yes. Very specifically in the assessment, they indicated that any policy should be made available to employees, vendors, and taxpayers. So absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Jim. We're good? We're good. Thanks for the report. Appreciate it. Good luck going forward with it. Great program. Okay, at this time, I'm sorry we're doing it this way, but that's okay. What, what we need to do is, we need, we're going to have to move to go into executive session. Hopefully it won't be too long, and then we have to come back and take a vote on a particular topic, and then we'll continue with the meeting. So at this point, can I make, have a motion for executive session? And we can...
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session.
Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And for the executive session, obviously beside the council, I need Denise McNair, Denise Parsons, Bob Weber, Kevin Roy, and Jim Renn, and if the, if the rest of you can wait in the hallway, we'll make this as brief as possible. Sorry for that, sticking it in the middle, but that's just where it kind of worked out tonight, and then we'll resume our meeting. Now, everybody's here. You guys didn't leave either. Wow, that's impressive. I would have been gone if I was out there. Yeah. Lately before the car cools off too, right? I mean, it's too bad, we're stuck now.
They brought us pizza, though.
Okay, so we're out of executive session, back on our agenda, and the next agenda topic, which flowed from our executive session, is, I guess it's really not topic number four now, but whatever number it is, it's the agreement between the town of Berlin and the home care health workers. So if I can get a, a motion.
I move to approve the agreement between the town of Berlin and the home care and school health care workers of Berlin dated July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2018.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. On to, yeah, we're down to, old number six, we'll just keep it at that, the motion on the tree removal services.
I move to, I move to, correct. Tree removal services to gardens and tree care of South Windsor at the rate of $112.75 per hour. Funding will come from the established line item accounts within fiscal years 2015, 2016, and 2016, 2017. Department budgets through established unit prices.
Okay, sec, second on that? Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We already did seven. On to number, topic number eight, the sole source provider of Neptune meters. Motion on that?
Sure. I move to award contract, award the contract to Thai Sales Subberry Mass as the sole proprietor source of Neptune meters in the northeast region to purchase water meters, radio frequency emitters, and a cost, for a cost not to exceed $18,500.
Okay, we have second on that?
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion? Anything? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, waive bidding requirements for the water tapping kits. Motion.
I move to waive the bidding requirements to purchase water tapping kits and couplings from Ferguson Water Works for a cost not to exceed $15,000, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Any discussion?
Yeah, just had a question for Mr. Dreama, if I could have you come up and address that, or even Art, if you want to join him, either way.
Jack.
Jack, I'm sorry. There's, I, I know, another, I actually know Art Healy, and I'm going to have a tough time getting Jack Healy straight. Yeah.
Could be easier for change.
So, so the question is, in the agenda item, it talks about Ferguson Water Works providing Mueller products consistent with our existing materials. Are there other distributors, or are there other products that could provide these parts?
Well, traditionally Ferguson, or has been, the, the go-to vendor for the Mueller products.
I need you on the mic.
I'm sorry. Which one?
Neither one.
Okay. Yeah, traditionally Ferguson has been the one that we've always gone to for Mueller products. I found out this afternoon, there is another vendor, but we haven't confirmed that, that apparently does sell. They're a fairly new vendor in town. It, they're in the Plainville, New Britain line, so HD Supply. However, we haven't had a time to confirm it. It was just, it just came up this afternoon.
Okay. I, I've actually been to both those locations, HD Supply and Ferguson. I do not know whether they, they both carry Mueller, and I didn't know if we were, if Mueller was proprietary and we had to go with that versus...
From what I understand, it was proprietary originally to Ferguson, and that's the only reason that we went to Ferguson. And typically, it's, it's, the other reason is because it's very close, it's right on the Berlin Turnpike, but HD Supply was associated with USA Blue Book, and they apparently, that's why we were ordering some of the materials from USA Blue Book initially, and then we found out financially that they were being separated. But we weren't familiar with the fact that HD Supply has any Mueller products until this afternoon, and somebody called me and asked me about that.
Also, David, we use Mueller products. It's consistent with our, with our other equipment, so, you know, it's not like you just go from tap system to tap system. We use, we use, we have Mueller equipment in-house. I talked to our superintendent today about that, I think we go over other types of taps. He said, I have to buy the tapping equipment, so we standardized on Mueller, and we thought Ferguson was the only support supplier until, until today. We just haven't had time to validate whether or not HD Supply can supply us with what we need.
Yeah, I'd just like to add another factor. Traditionally, we've been purchasing only about $2,000 or $3,000 worth of equipment from Ferguson this year because of the extended additional tappings that we were acquired, and we were low on inventory. The only reason that's why we were actually going back, we, we've increased our purchase orders several times now, and I wanted to make sure that we were covered for the next time because we anticipate put additional work in the spring.
Is there, I mean, Mayor, could we delay this to our next meeting to investigate that a little bit further? I mean, we probably don't, may not have time to go bid or anything like that, but I'm just curious to, you know, how quickly, I understand spring is right around the corner, but it just would be helpful to understand that, and...
Would it be possible just to take the name of the vendor out of the motion, and the Water Department could go to the best source?
The, we're waiving the bidding requirements. Would we do that?
I don't know. I'm asking them that.
Uh, I wouldn't think you could do that, right?
The motion is to waive the bidding requirement, so it sounds to me like we wouldn't be able to do that.
Right, that's what I would think.
That's just my thought.
Could vote on the motion.
It may not be a cost-saving move at all, but I'm just saying, do we have two weeks to look at it and come back and reconsider it?
Yeah, I would say that if you put it on the next agenda, that would give them the appropriate time to contact the other vendor that they know is in existence now and find out whether the products are the same.
Or at least get some pricing from them, so we...
Yeah.
Apples to apples.
We have no confirmation from them, other than what he said verbally to me, which was a surprise to all of us, because typically Ferguson was the only vendor that had the Mueller products.
And I don't think two weeks happened hurts.
And that's, I was going to ask, two, two weeks, not, not, nothing's going to happen, so...
If we need, if we need one or two taps in that time, we could, that's within our budget.
Yeah, you'll be under, she'll be under, yeah.
All right. Well, I mean, again, two weeks, I don't think it's going to matter that much. We just get some additional information, put this back on the agenda next week, if that's okay, we'll, we'll have to, obviously, we'll vote on this motion since it's on the floor, but...
Do we have to vote on the motion?
Yeah, do we have to vote? Or, or what?
I would, I would do a step, another motion says move to postpone this to your next council meeting.
Okay.
And second that.
All right, so let's move to postpone this to the next...
Mayor, I move to postpone this agenda item to two weeks to our next council meeting.
All right, second on that?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carries. We'll, see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you very much. Makes sense. Okay. All right. Topic number 10 is to establish a Charter Revision Commission consistent, you know, well, with a motion, we'll make a motion out of the charter, this is our Charter Revision Commission motion, we talked about this last meeting.
Okay. I move to establish a Charter Revision Commission consisting of five to seven members, and that they be appointed at the next council meeting.
Second for discussion on that?
Second.
Okay. Motion, so what do we think? I know we, we got some information today about, you know, different things that we would put in there, a lot of fixes, a lot of different things, some technical fixes, some other things. What does everybody think?
I just have a question to clarify. So procedurally, we would vote, and if, if the vote came out yes, then what we would do is appoint people to serve on this committee.
Correct.
And then the committee, we can give the committee a little direction, but ultimately the decision's up to them.
Well, up to them, to, to, yes, and then they'll come back to us with what they think we should revise.
And then we vote on that.
Vote on that, correct.
And if that gets moved, that will go on the ballot in November, correct?
Correct.
Okay. What if that doesn't happen?
Uh, well, because it doesn't go on the ballot, but, uh...
What if what doesn't happen? What's your question?
Yeah, so what if, what, what if it doesn't move forward tonight? Is my question, I'd like to know sort of what's going to happen next.
I think the process would be, we'd have to get a petition.
Okay.
If we don't have the supermajority, which would be five votes, I believe, if I'm right.
Right. Well, it's, it's 10, yeah, of 10% of the registered voters per the statute, right?
Correct. I believe that's the case.
The last vote has to be a five, too? Yes.
It has to be, yes, it has to be...
The creation of it?
To create it, right, to forward.
Yeah.
So I have a couple of thoughts. We, we were able to get some information from the town's perspective in terms of what they want to see changed in the charter, but, you know, I think we had talked at the last meeting about what you all, since you're initiating it, kind of what your direction was. I did have the opportunity to speak with the mayor and got a little bit of direction, but again, it's, it's somewhat last minute, and here's, here's my thoughts. My, my biggest concern with this is this has the potential to impact the town for many years, and we are doing it at a time when we are in the process of determining whether we are going to retain current council or we are going to get new council, and we don't know where we stand with that. This is a, this is our governing body. This is what tells us what we need to do from a, from a council perspective, from a commission perspective. Not only that, it is what is taken into court when we are having to go to court to defend ourselves for a number of issues, zoning issues, whatever the case may be. My concern is to, if, if, if we do end up with a new council, a new attorney, we are throwing them into a situation where they are not familiar with our charter, how it relates to statute, having to have them get up to speed, but at the same time, asking them to get up to speed on everything else about the town business that they are going to be responsible for. I am very concerned if we go forward today, that we are rushing into something that does not need to be rushed into. This, again, is, is our governing piece of paper that tells us how we do our business. It is not a, a new roof, it is not a money expenditure. It needs to be done with foresight, with, with thought about future impact, and personally, I feel like this is, and this is completely assumption, not been articulated by, by anyone on the council, but I think it is, is being looked at as a political tool, and, and I don't think that is what this town needs with a charter revision. There are some things in the, in the charter that I think need to, need to be looked at, but I think we need to do it in a thoughtful manner and not rush into it and try to ram it through for a November ballot. So I'm going to go on record as saying I'm going to be opposed to this.
Okay. Anybody else?
Um, oh, sorry.
Ladies first, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I just, I also wanted to mention that um, as I was thinking about this, um, I did put it on social media and ask my friends what their thoughts were um, about a charter review. Um, and the response was overwhelmingly no. So in listening to my voters, in, you know, listening to our constituents, our, our neighbors, our family, our friends, um, I'm gonna have to say that I'm against this as well. I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say that I think last council unanimously voted to put this, um, at least put money in the, in the upcoming budget for it. And I don't think we're rushing into anything. The last charter revision was 2007. And I think the town side input today showed that there's a lot of procedural problems that need to be addressed, even just to update to the state statutes. Um, even Attorney Weber's ideas, you know, are, should be debated. And I think the only way that's gonna happen is to have people on the outside with a charter revision look at those things.
And, and I don't disagree with you, Counselor Luddy. I, you know, I, I do feel that there is some things that, that need to be looked at and changed. But my, my biggest concern is doing it at a time when we are unsure of where our, who our attorney is going to be. And I, like I said, I just really think it needs to be done in a very thoughtful manner. And, and I, I would ask that we wait until after that issue is resolved.
Mayor? Yes. So going back when we were doing the budget session, um, and Mr. Rosso, I think you're worth, uh, had talked to me a little bit about the potential of, of this. And you know, really at that time, I didn't have any one political, one way or the other, but I had heard from staff that there's some fixes that they felt might, might make some things better. You know, I, I think one of the specific ones that, that highlighted and made some sense to me was uh, from, from Mr. Ren with respect to um, if we're responsible for this overall budget, we feel sometimes a little hamstringed on maybe making sure that we're working closely with the Board of Ed and, and are apprised of their constraints or their challenges too. And you know, he gave me an example of a, a, a particular contract that if it, it was some discussion with the council and potentially the Board of Ed uh, with us too, at some point, that and we had to purvey over that particular contract, that we would have been able to move it forward in, in a sense that, okay, the schools and the town need to work together and get a very efficient and effective contract in place. And uh, one of the recommendations from Finance Director was, would, would do that very thing. You know, certainly, there, there's many other things that folks may wanna consider. You know, thoughtfully, and I think uh, so Shet, that you had, you know, had indicated it was, made some sense. So we had talked about the timeframe that we'd keep Mr. Weber. Uh, that was a goal and a timeframe in which it made sense to us. That could certainly, you know, go further if that, if, if we see that challenge. We did receive a number of proposals from attorneys. And experience would be certainly um, a key factor in, in, in selection. It should always be. Whether it's considering charter revisions or not. But I, I really think that um, it, it could be seen political for saying, well, let's, let's not do charter revision. I, I think it's something that the folks that would be interested in, that, that any one of us would want to appoint to that, would take it very seriously and wanna do it in, in a manner that would be helpful and productive going forward. So that our town can be affordable town. It can be one that is run efficiently and effectively and, and, and quite frankly, is, is uh, the best for our town. Yeah, so I really think that um, we should consider that. And I, I guess, uh, you know, I felt in our budget session when we set aside the, the dollars associated with that, that uh, we felt that that could make some sense and we could go forward with that. So I, I don't see a corporation council as being a limiting factor. It could even, you could, you know, flip the coin and say um, either existing council could, would look at uh, at, in a different manner or with a new corporation council. Say it could, with their experience with other towns. I saw in many of these proposals with broad experience across many towns that could then, if, if we were to make a shift, that would bring that in. And I, I think all uh, that needs to be considered by the, you know, the folks that will, among us that will then come and recommend to the council here, which corporation council they'll work with. Some of my thoughts.
Charlie?
Tonight, we're being asked to form a commission for charter revision. We're not asking, being asked to revise the charter. We're asking to appoint a number of concerned citizens to look at the charter and come back to us with issues they feel are important to help our town move forward. And I think not doing that would be a disservice to our voters. Our, our staff has pointed out some shortcomings regardless of political influence. And I think we owe it to our citizens to look at these issues and, and find some informed citizens to help us study that. And they may come back and say, we don't need to change anything. But I think we at least owe a look to our voters.
Yes.
As the only slug that's been on three or four of these charter revision commissions, the single most important individual is the town attorney. And to form a committee without knowing who your council is, is, is irresponsible. I mean, if, if you told me, yeah, our town attorney's gonna stay, sign him up, good, that's fine, we'll go. But you're going to bid. You can get, do we fleece him and how? I mean, it, it just seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. Next year's another year. We won't be as bogged down. I think we're gonna have some business this year. I think there may be a police station coming down the road. I say, I, I see no reason to do it. And, and I would be offended, quite frankly, that we go ahead without knowing who our council is.
I, I have to agree with Peter on that. Um, you and I are both attorneys. Mayor, you know how long, you know, you, you were with the federal government for, well, you said 25 years? You know how long it takes to learn a body of law and to apply that body of law to the work that you do. I'm still, I, I started my job, you know, a year and a half ago, and I'm still learning it. So to have somebody brand new come in, and even though they may have experience, they don't have experience with this document. So that's, you know, that's, that's something that we definitely need to consider.
I, I certainly hope as we go through the attorney process, that we're gonna pick an attorney that's experienced and it's gonna know.
Exactly, yeah, of course.
What to do.
Of course.
I don't know. It's, you know, from my perspective, I certainly don't like the fact that people will politicize it. I, I don't think that's what we're here for. That, that offends me, quite frankly, and I don't wanna hear that. Because I think it's for the good of the town. It's 2007, that's a long time. A lot of things change in all these years. The staff has made recommendations. There's other things we could possibly look at. And again, we're looking at it. It's coming back to us for a vote later, later in the year. I mean, we're talking November. It's only January. It's not like it's happening tomorrow. I don't know. Yes?
I think because we need a super majority, we probably should have a roll call vote on this.
We will. But I, I, so I, I don't, I don't really, uh, you know, I, to me, it's for the good of the town to look at the charter. There's definitely some technical corrections we can make at a minimum. There may be some other more important corrections we can, we can have the, the committee look at and bring back to us for consideration. We don't know what they're gonna bring back. We, we will charge them with certain things to look at.
I'm gonna steal a line from my esteemed colleagues to the left. Um, I'm not against this. I'm against the process that we're taking to do it. I think it, it needs to be done after we have our attorney issue resolved. And so, that's it.
Do you wanna postpone this?
I don't know. What uh, doesn't sound like either side uh, it's gonna matter. We could wait another two weeks and think about it if we wanna have some more discussions.
I'm willing to take a vote. I don't think that attorney issue is gonna be resolved by.
Let's, let's take the vote then.
Mayor, can I just offer some more comments?
Sure.
You know, we, we all tend to find particular reasons why we wanted to do one thing, yes or no. You know, the current corporation council could, could very well be part of proposals received. And so, you know, I just feel it's a little short sighted to say that, that uh, that's not having a decision on a corporation coun, council at this point is, is uh, is as big a factor as I think you're making it. We'll select someone that's knowledgeable and gives us the perspective that we need. I think it's a, it's a slam dunk. And I, you know, I would challenge and ask the question of, you know, you know, besides that, this, this concern and this question is, is there a need? Mr. Rosso seemed to, in our discussions, you at least, you know, and you, if, if you've changed your mind on that too, that you don't think a charter revision is worth it, you know. Those that were on the budget committee and when I had suggested it, said, yeah, let's put 5,000 in and we think we need to do some changes, so. Maybe there's a differentiation here of whether it's a singular issue or it's, yeah, we need to do a charter revision.
I didn't understand. Was that a question?
I.
Just a statement.
I just wanna respond to that just quickly. Uh, you're saying that not having a, a council in place could, we, we could still have Mr. Weber, which, which is great. We could, but there's no guarantee that we will. And that's the issue that I think we're all having. Not that we may or may not have Attorney Weber and his firm still representing us, but the fact that we don't know who will be representing us, don't know what their limitations are, or, you know, any of those things. We have no idea. So that's, I think that's part of where the problem is, that there's too many uncertainties right now to be able to make this decision today. If you can guarantee that Mr. Weber will stay for another year, two years, however long this process takes, maybe we'll be having a different conversation. But since that's not, that's not what's in the record, then.
Yeah, I mean, I, the attorney, whoever the attorney might be, um, I hope we have some faith in each other and the town manager and whoever's gonna sit down on the interviews with the attorneys, that we're going to pick a, an attorney who is more than capable to handle whatever town business we're gonna conduct. If it's Mr. Weber, if it's someone else, I mean, we're certainly not, it's, it may be unknown who that name may be, but um, you know, present company, not insulting you, but there's, there's many great attorneys out there. Mr. Weber being one of them too.
I'm sure, but not many who haven't looked at our charter before this either, so. And that's what we're talking about.
Well, I, I hope they could burn some midnight oil if we hire them, whoever they might be, and do a little research for us. Again, we're talking about November. You know, we're not talking about tomorrow.
We're actually talking about July, because this would have to be finalized by July. So it's, it's not November.
It's January. It's, it's not July. We have six months.
And we know, we know how meetings work. Unless we're gonna ask these commission members to meet every week until July, I, you know, Mr. Rosso's been a member of them and they've taken years sometimes. So, you know, I, I just, again, I, I think that there is a way to do this when, when we have confidence that our attorneys will be able to advise in a way that they know our charter and how it compares with, with the state charter. And, and I just don't think there's a need to do it today. So. I'm ready for a vote if you.
Ready? Ready for the vote?
Mayor, just one more comment, please.
Last comment, then we'll take the vote.
Or it's maybe even a question.
No, go ahead.
I heard comment something about it could be more than this timeframe. So if we do form a commission, a charter revision commission, could it be over an extended period of time? Does it, does it have to be all or nothing now? I mean, that's what I feel like we're getting into. It's all or nothing. It's either, well, we're gonna do it or not. I'm saying, let's do it. And I understand the concern, but I think we can work through that. And what if that charter revision rolls into, it doesn't happen to revise the charter until the follow-on year? What's?
Well, that is a question. Actually, you know, now that you say that, let, let's say that things take longer than we anticipate. Just, just, just for a hypothetical. So we're not ready for the November ballot, let's say, for whatever reason. You know, attorney aside, it could be any, you know, any reason. What, what happens then?
There's a certain amount of time that they do have.
I'm guessing that's probably statutory somehow. That's what I would guess. What? It's good to know.
And maybe the other question is when? When would be a good time?
Glad she's looking at it, yeah. While they're conferring, you know, we do have, just so, we do have the appointments, you know, the, next, there's still, I think there's still applications coming in. So.
And Mayor encouraged folks to.
Yeah, we encourage everybody, send in the applications, get them in. Hopefully we can look at them, make some appointments next week, uh, our next meeting if we can't. Yeah, I wanna push it up, yeah. Uh, we're about to get through January, so it warms up quickly.
It appears that you have 16 months from the appointment for them to submit their, their draft report. So you have more time. It's just the question is, I, I think one of the timing issues is getting it on the ballot when you have the maximum turnout of voters. That was the thought.
Yeah, right, okay.
Presidential. So if you work backwards from the, the November election, that changes the timeframe, but statutorily, you have more time than that.
Okay, I got you. So we do have more time.
You can also have less time. I mean, what, the tentative dates that I gave you here is really to kinda.
Give you plenty of leeway. You, you have to get the final question and the final draft together by September sometime uh, to, to get it onto the September 6th or so. So you do have more time. It's conceivable, you can wait and see what happens with the corporation council position. I mean, there's, if, do you have to take a vote tonight? No. I mean, that's, that's the short answer.
So now, the timeframe is September is when we would actually need the final question to the.
The dates that I have on the tentative schedule towards the end, on what you have to work with as far as to give you time to do, you know, more than June, July. So it's have to kind of be steadfast.
Well, but, but keep in mind, you also don't have August because you, August, there's no meeting. So the timeframe.
We've had meetings in August before.
Well, you can. You can have a meeting. You can. Certainly, there's something, if you wanna do it, you can.
And I will say that when the town manager looked at this, she had it a lot tighter. I gave you more of the timeframe.
But I thought that the, the purpose was twofold, to get it on the November ballot for the maximum exposure.
Yeah, I think that's the plan.
And then to also save money, not having two referendums, you know, two elections. Cause it, there's a cost.
But it can make it a tighter timeframe, which would cost.
No, I mean, that, that, that would be the plan, Denise. That's what I think we envisioned to, to get it on a.
But if it went past, I don't see where.
It could if, if we had to, yeah.
It's in a different part of the session.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I gave you dates. But if you waited until March to appoint, when you know who your town attorney's going to be, then it kinda makes it tight, but it depends upon how open this becomes. You know, when, I had the privilege of serving with Peter in 2002, and that, we really did look at a lot of the areas of the charter. The one in 2007, I think met four or five times. I mean, they were boom, boom, boom. They had certain ideas. So a lot of it depends upon how open this becomes.
I mean, so obviously the more we focus them, the conceivably, they have less issues to deal with.
That's, that's what you're considering. They can still tear it apart.
Yeah.
Well, I know, I understand.
We have.
But I'm sure they, they may, whoever they may be, whoever these people may be, yeah. But I mean, the bottom line is, it's coming back to us for whatever they come up with. And we can reject the whole thing, keep part of it, right? I mean, we can do whatever we want. Or how, how does that part work, just so I know?
That part would be, if you look at your tentative schedule, then the council on number 10, the council would make suggested recommendations, all right, within 15 days of your public hearing. Then the, the.
And that, and that would be only, I'm sorry, that would be only on, and so they come back to us with, let's say, 10 things?
Yep.
All right, so now we've got 10 things in front of us. And it can only be those 10 things, correct? Whatever they come back with.
You can add things.
Yeah, okay. Now, I just wanna make sure.
How about take things away?
Yes.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what I wanted to.
Let's use, like, if you, if the charter revision commission decided that they should have an elect, you know, go back to an elected town clerk. And that was in their final draft. And I'm saying this because I hope you don't do that. But you say, no, we don't want an elected town clerk. The process has worked with civil service. So you would then say to the charter revision commission, we want, we don't agree with that part of it. Charter revision commission would then have 30 days to make the changes and submit the final draft to the town council. That's where you may need a special council meeting in August if some of these things, you know, happen. But then at that point, um, again, you have 15 days from that date to either accept a draft or reject it. draft or reject it.
Um...
And at that point, if they reject the draft, that ends it, because that's in the final...
Now, is it the whole draft, or part of the draft?
Yes, that would be, you would reject it, the entire...
So, they're coming for us, we're going to say, all right, you brought us 10 things, we only like five of them.
Right.
So, go back and...
And they say, no, we're not changing anything.
Right, okay.
Or we're only going to change, you know, three of them.
Yeah, okay, so it comes back, yeah.
And we would have to do that by vote, correct?
Some more negotiating.
Send it back.
The council does it, yes.
So, it would be a majority vote if, on what things to send back to the Charter Review Commission?
Yeah, because at that point, it's not a supermajority.
Right, right.
It's a majority vote at that time.
So, it's only a supermajority to start the process, and after that, it's a majority vote.
Yes, yes.
Right, okay.
And ultimately, if they don't, we only want five things, it comes back to us, we just vote on the five...
I think you have to reject it or accept it.
The whole thing?
The whole.
The whole thing?
I think it's the whole thing at that point.
Okay, okay.
They've had their case to reconsider.
Yeah, okay, okay.
All right? And you do it through public hearings and the whole draft.
Right, right, okay.
Anything, Madam Clerk, you'd indicated, too, that there could be individual votes on portions of it, when it does go out to the public, is that still true?
As far as with the questions?
Yeah, the questions.
Yes, you're right, Peter.
Yeah.
You can have it, you're totally right on that. You can have it where you just say to approve the, shall approve the Charter Revisions as presumed, recommended by the town council, or you can have five questions, one of them is the town clerk shall be elected, the second one is, you know, whatever your choice is, you can do that.
So, they could all be separate votes?
Yes.
Separate items on the ballot?
Yes.
That tends to defeat it.
If you do it that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, I think we're getting maybe a...
Right.
Well, we're getting that far, yeah.
A simple question, that's all.
Some information, yeah, some information.
And I think there was some comment about, you know, the number of people getting out, I mean, I don't think we want to wait four years for the next presidential election to try to make any of this happen.
No, I agree. I mean, I think that was the, you know...
I think we're all very capable here.
Denise should say, that was, I think, our, right, our thought behind it.
But, if I could further muddy the waters, and I, you did, I did convey to you several of the staff indications, but that was on request of council to ask what, and I think the one, that all four or five, however many people had sent in suggestions to me, was the change in the amount of the threshold for bidding, and you can do that without a Charter Revision Commission. So, that's just a further thought, if you're so inclined to take the consensus of the staff because of the new legislation several years back.
Great.
Just a thought.
Another question for Madam Clerk, the, or Corporation Council, the one, that if there is a necessity to petition it, can, when does, does a petition start any time, or does it have to be after a vote on the consideration of it?
I don't think it has to be after a vote. 7-190.
190? I thought it was any time, Kate.
So, and I'll just, as you're taking a look at that, Mayor, I'll just indicate my thought on asking that particular question is, as we talk and try to work through plans for Corporation Council and so forth over the next couple of weeks, and may have a clearer understanding where we're at, so that we could potentially have this agenda item as a point, and then, in two weeks' council meeting, and have it as an appointing, establishing, and potentially appointing at that time, too, something for everyone here in council to consider, whether that might make some sense.
I mean, that's something we can, yeah, I mean, that's always a possibility, to delay the vote, I suppose. If we delay the vote...
Delay the vote on?
On the Charter Revision Commission, until perhaps we have a better feel for who the Corporation Council will be. I mean, that does tighten, I guess, some timeframes, obviously.
I was saying, we could do two for one in the next council meeting, where it's establishing and appointing. I think we did that last time.
You're being very, I think you're being very optimistic to pull off interviewing however many firms that you wish to interview within two weeks' time and have...
No, I'm not saying we'd have a decision, we'd have a better fight, because I think there's some questions about the timing of it, we may not have that solution.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But, that's all. I'm not saying in two weeks, we're going to have a Corporation Council, it's, that, I'm trying to address the concern I hear, you know?
Right.
We have concerns, let's talk about it, let's not just take sides and...
Yeah, I appreciate your willingness to talk about it, but it still sounds like we're not going to have a definitive answer, so, you know, I'm ready to move the vote when you guys are.
I don't know what definitive is, you definitely have to have it in place.
Yeah.
And so, what would be your proposal, when you would put forth the Charter Revision? Do you want it, or no?
I will want to wait to vote on it when I know what I'm voting on, kind of similar to the argument I heard when we were initially going through the high school renovation process, a lot of people said, there's no plan, I'm voting no, there's no plan. Here, seems like there's no plan, so, at this point, I'm no.
What's in there?
When we have a plan and we have more information, that might change, I don't know, but...
Well, I thought the objection was, we have no Corporation Council, that's it, now we have a different objection to that.
No, it's all the same thing, there's just no...
No plan, because we have no Corporation Council.
There's no Corp. Council, there's no direction that I've heard from anybody about what this Charter Review Commission is even going to be asked to do. I still have in excess of 20 comments on Facebook from people who don't want us to do it, so...
20?
Yes.
20 out of 20,000, but that's okay.
20 out of my 1,700 friends.
No, I get it, I mean, I just, I, whatever, we'll take the vote. I don't see it being detrimental to the town to do it. I think it's been a long time since we've done it, I don't want to politicize it at all, I don't think that's the purpose of it, from my perspective. I'm not, I don't think that, I think we have to have some faith, and we're going to choose a corporate council that's going to be very capable, or we won't choose that person, you know, whether it's Bob Weber or anybody else, it's going to be someone that's very capable to lead us through this process, or that wouldn't be the person that we would choose. But, that's my opinion, so I think we move it, we take the vote, we've had a lot of great discussion from everybody, appreciate all the input, it was very good. So, the motion's on the floor, so we'll take the vote as far as the establish a Charter Revision Commission.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we've...
Well, you want to roll call, yeah, roll call, so...
Counsel, can I have one?
Nay.
Counsel Evans?
Aye.
Counsel Luddy?
Aye.
Counsel Panamassa?
Aye.
Counsel Roushaf?
Nay.
Counsel Russell?
Nay.
Mayor, please, Mr....
Aye.
You don't have the support of the board.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks for the discussion. Okay, so, appointments, just started to discuss it a little bit, last agenda item. Next meeting, we're still accepting applications, hopefully, we get plenty of people for all the vacancies, encourage everyone to have, you know, whoever wants to participate in the town, I think that's a great thing to do.
Can I just make a point?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
You all have received, you know, the killer tree here that I have given you, all right? And then, tonight, I gave you any of the appointments that have come forth since the last packet was sent out. So, I would ask that you just insert these into this, and then, I'm only going to give you the packet of what comes forth from today forward, all right?
Now, this is all of them so far?
This is all of them so far.
So far?
Yes.
So, I mean, we, I don't, do we have any clue on how many vacancies total? I mean, I know each, probably, commission has one or two, probably, I'm guessing. Something like that, yeah, okay, so...
All of these.
Yeah, so, it's one or two, so, if this is all we have right now, we probably need some more, hopefully, some more.
Wasn't there more others?
Is there more than this?
They came in today.
Those came in today?
Yeah.
Oh, but there's more.
There were others before that were ever in these.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
You have in the back of it.
Yeah, that's the rest of them.
And what I did, what I did was, I gave you the copy of the authority, the purpose and authority, because especially with the new members. And then, a schedule of who currently is on it, their attendance, and then, any applications that I had received for your packet.
So, that's in there, these are the new ones?
Yes, and if anyone, this electronically, and they do want a hard copy of it, then just let me know, and I'll do this for you as a hard copy, all right? But...
If you receive any more, you want to email them to us?
I can do that, yes, definitely, if that's what you like.
That way, we'll have a time between now and two.
Yep, and then I can put a hard copy in your packets, so that you get them, all right?
Maybe, if I might suggest, like, we do it at the end of this week, and, because we get them daily, you know, one or two a day.
Right, yeah, that's fine.
So, maybe at the end of this week, we'll email the ones that come in, and then the Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, or, you know...
There's a lot of commissions here.
Because people struggle.
That's for sure.
Madam Clerk, could you do these electronically, too? The ones you gave me, paper?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem, that's good.
Christian, in keeping with that, we'll try not to kill more trees. I appreciate that, too, I do appreciate that, I know, I'm kind of a paper guy, but I feel bad about it, I do feel bad, I'll plant a couple extra trees.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so, we've got a little homework to do with the appointments, right, I guess? It's a lot of work, it is. So, what I'm thinking is, if we don't get to all the appointments next meeting, we do them the next meeting, too, the following meeting, all right? And I think that's hopefully acceptable to everybody, right?
Historically, that's happened.
Yeah, that's what I figured, okay, that's good, well, good, I'm glad I'm with the program.
Try to address everyone that is put in by that time, and...
Yeah, there we go, yeah, no, that's a good thing, no...
And go out and encourage others, you can have as much fun as we are having.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah.
Something I'm not...
Yeah, they're a little, they're a little crazy if they want to volunteer, but that's what we like, we like that, that's okay. Okay, good, so, we'll work on those, I know we got a little homework on that. Okay, Town Managers Report, we'll move along here.
Yes, just a couple of things, I, you should have gotten at least an agenda for next Tuesday's Special Council Meeting, which will be devoted to the fire service, Jim Simons has just left, but he will be there with the other chiefs and go over things, because if, for those of you that attended the orientation, it was clear that he's got a lot of information that he wants to share, and I thought it might be a good idea to start out with that, because...
I have them, Denise, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
No, no, they don't have them, there they are, I got them all, that's all right, we're good.
To take it out from the...
Yes, we're good, we got them.
To take it out from the budget meeting evening, because that tends to be long, so, next Tuesday, in the, he's going to have a PowerPoint and a couple of other people in the library, large meeting room, the Blanche Delaney Room, I think it's called formally.
Is this basically the consolidation?
Well, that, everything, the apparatus plan that they have put together, the different committees that they have regarding the one chief, the status of the on-call things, he's going to cover everything, so it's a very informative meeting, open to the public, noticed everything, so anybody who's interested in...
So, this is taking place of what they would do during budget, because I'm not going to be available next week?
It'll be the long version of what they do on the budget.
But they'll still do some things, so I'll still get...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Peter doesn't have to take copies.
It's not going to be televised, so we can, there will be minutes, but we are not going to have it televised.
Yeah, I think it was a good idea, you know, we said that they've got so much information, obviously, very important information, so, we're going to try.
Merging in a fire department, get involved in the Charter Revision, or that?
It's possible, but the committee that has been appointed among the fire departments right now have been looking towards a one chief, which wouldn't necessarily involve a charter change. So, what they're suggesting is, without touching the charter at this point, but...
Baby stuffs.
Yeah, that certainly, but that, he's done an awful lot of work in this last year, and as you could tell, for those that have attended, he's quite passionate about it, and I thought that it might be good to start an evening with the fire service. They are all passionate about it, not just Jim, but there's a lot of information, and it's a lar, it's, if not the largest part of the budget, close to, with the apparatus and everything else, so you can ask any questions that you want. And along those lines, I am also trying to set up a priority-setting meeting, and it's just a matter of when exactly, there's only so many days in, I don't know if you want to stick to Tuesdays, if that's difficult, if you want to try to do a Saturday, do you want to go into February for a meeting, similar to, for those of you that have been on for a while, we sat down and went through all of the large capital projects, and this would be, so that staff will get an idea as to what to concentrate on for your agenda, or your vision of what you want to get accomplished.
So, we have to do it before the budget.
Well, it would be, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
So, just what you want to do on a cold winter's night or a day, but I will talk with the mayor a little bit more to figure out schedules.
Yes, it sounds like a good suggestion to get us up to speed on stuff, yeah.
It's helpful, we should probably have more than one.
It'll be easier on Dave when he puts the budget together.
Yes.
He knows where we're going.
It's easier on staff to know what to concentrate on, because we could be going down a completely erroneous road and not know that that's not something...
Yeah, makes sense, no, it's good.
Mayor, and I'm just, I'm trying to make it easy on the council, too, as we go into
the budget, so that we have actionable options there, and if we've already talked a little bit about them, you know, fire truck, yeah or nay, should we include that, that's an option, we've already have an orientation to it, and we can spend more time looking at actionable items rather than the...
Yeah, that's good.
...fine-tooth comb that some of us have experienced.
Easier is good, as we go forward, yeah.
And that's it.
Good, okay, great, thank you. Special Committee Reports, what do we have?
Just a reminder that we have an Audit Committee meeting on the 21st of this month at 4:30, I believe.
Okay, anybody else?
Mayor, yes, just for the Budget Committee, I hadn't received any comments from anyone. If I missed it, and I missed an email, let me know, but I haven't, I think Mr. Wren's kind of put out, I think Sheila has put out invites to the upcoming budget session, so, but if you've got some concerns, let me know.
I responded, right?
Yes, and that just, if I could just ask all of you, and if there is an occasion where you're unable to come to a meeting or to come to a budget time, the invites are very good, because you can say you can't, but if you find that you can't come to a council meeting, somebody should either let myself or Kate know...
At a council meeting.
Ahead of time, for mainly a council meeting, and it's just so that we know that there's a quorum.
All those invites, all those things on the email there.
Yeah, I'll look.
Yeah, I kind of just went by all those, okay, I'll get to those.
But if you find that, like, say it's Sunday, and something comes up for Tuesday night's meeting or something, because I'd hate to come, there haven't been any occasions night's meeting or something, because I'd hate to come, there haven't been any occasions where there haven't been a quorum, but it could happen, so, if you know you're gonna be out of country, state, whatever, let Kate or I know before.
And just as budget chair, Dave, I'll just let you know, the last two meetings, I'm gonna be traveling, so...
Yeah, we didn't see that, so...
And those are all, all those invite, but that was all on that separate calendar you sent out, too, right?
It's on the other calendar.
The other calendar, but there was, there was one sheet that didn't have, didn't have all the meeting, yeah, meeting schedule?
With the highlights.
Yeah, with the highlights?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I kind of like to see it all there.
March is a busy month.
Yes, I saw that, I noticed that. So, I guess, we don't go to our regular job during March, I guess. You guys can, you guys can pay the mortgage for that month, I guess, right? Is that what happens? Is that paying the mortgage for that month?
Yeah, right.
Berlin's an F1, don't worry about it.
Huh, what's that?
Berlin's an F1.
Yes, okay, all right.
Just raise taxes.
Anyway, okay, any other special committee meetings, council communications, anything? Anything? We're good? No council communications, except in some minutes, we had it amended, right? Minutes?
On the original minutes that you received, the first set of votes were just not included, and so, this has the amended, so you're gonna move them as amended, please.
Okay, so, we can have a motion?
I was gonna ask what Madam Clerk just was saying, that you said that there was a change?
Your first, your first set of votes was not included in the minutes, so the first item that you voted on, it didn't state...
Who said what, is that item number two?
I think, I don't have them in front of me, it was either item number two, all right, it didn't have that paragraph.
I did see that, too, and that's what I was gonna ask about, so, that's what I thought you were talking about, you said the first one, so...
Yeah, sorry about that.